It's good to see so many friends and family, new faces and older faces and familiar faces. Welcome this evening to the January 2nd, 2024 meeting of the University Heights City Council. Before we call the order, we do have the installation of four council persons and the votes of office. We do have here tonight Judge Frankie Goldberg, Judge Anne Walton Keller, and Magistrate Mark Wiseman to administer oaths. Delighted to see our members of the bench here this evening and the local University Heights members of the bench. We may be able to see a few more of them before the year is out. Let us begin this evening then with the oath for council member-elect Michelle Weiss to be administered by Judge Francie Goldberg.
I want to say a few things before we start. You never have a former prosecutor swear you in because he was being a punditary. I remember a young woman in the audience when I was, sorry, I don't want to repeat my bad, when I was a member of University Heights City Council, and during our council meetings, there was this woman that was taking notes for the League of Women Voters. I had no idea who she was, but she was writing furiously during those meetings and actually staying until 11 o'clock at night, sometimes when we had those long meetings if necessary. And that woman was Councilwoman Weiss. I had the honor and the privilege to swear in Councilwoman Weiss in 2016 for her first term, and now I am swearing her in for her third and final term, and we have certainly come full circle. In addition to her University Heights City Council responsibilities and the previous four years as Vice Mayor, Michelle is an accountant by trade and holds an MBA from John Carroll University. She is currently CFO of the largest Jewish day school in the state of Ohio, Hebrew Academy of Cleveland. In addition, Michelle teaches at CSU as an adjunct professor. She is also a founding member of the Amats Initiative, a nonprofit organization which provides professional development to engage principals of schools. She holds board positions on Yehad and organizations servicing developmentally challenged youth and adults, and the Community Relations Committee and the Jewish Federation of Cleveland. However, her greatest accomplishment has been raising three children together with her husband Marcel, who is here, and celebrating milestones with them and her grandchildren. She certainly is the youngest-looking grandmother in University Heights next to me, so... To quote a Greek proverb, "A civilization flourishes when people plant trees under whose shade they will never sit." Councilwoman Weiss is planting those trees which include priorities of economic development, building new municipal facilities, and maintaining and enhancing the high level of city services that University Heights residents have come to appreciate. The writer William Arthur Ward wrote that "The greatness is not found in possessions, power, position, or prestige. It is discovered in goodness, humility, service, and character." I know that Councilwoman Weiss will continue to strive to be that councilwoman that exemplifies qualities of resilience, awe, connection, compromise, gratitude, and possibility to the entire University Heights community. Marcel, do you want to come up? I, Michelle Weiss...
I, Michelle Weiss.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
...to support the Constitution...
To support the Constitution.
...and laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
...of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances...
And the charter and ordinances.
...of the city of University Heights.
The city of University Heights.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...as councilperson of the city of University Heights.
As councilperson of the city of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Judge Goldberg. Next, we will have the administration of the oath for council member-elect Wayne Wiser to be administered by Judge Anne Walton Keller.
It's really hard to follow Judge Goldberg. I just want to say, I got to know Wayne a couple of years ago when I was out on the campaign trail, and we spent some time talking. And what was so obvious to me is how much she cares about the city of University Heights. And she's done a great job on council. I'm very honored to swear her in for her first full term as councilmember. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Winifred Wiser...
I, Winifred Wiser.
...do solemnly affirm to support the Constitution...
Do solemnly affirm to support the Constitution.
...and laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances...
And the charter and ordinances.
...of the city of University Heights.
And the city of University Heights.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...as councilmember of the city of University Heights.
As councilmember of the city of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Judge Walton Keller. Next, I would call Magistrate Mark Wiseman, who is going to administer the next two oaths. First, of council member-elect John Rock.
You know I voted for you, right? The day after you get elected, everybody in the world voted for you. I first met John when we appointed him to council in 2015.
2015, November, yeah.
There weren't many things that that council could agree on, some of you might remember, but the fact that we wanted John for the open spot, everybody agreed on picking John. We could tell not only that the fact you were an architect was going to help us, but it's the way we knew that you were going to be intelligent and insightful and easy to work with, it really came true, all the stuff we thought that was going to happen when we appointed you, it really came true. It was great to have you on council and to be with you. So many of the people may recognize John if his neighbors are here from running around all the time. He's not in trouble. He's doing marathons. He's doing 50 marathons before you're 50. You've done how many?
Twenty-five.
Trying to still like you at this point. Twenty-five, that's a lot of marathons. So that's very impressive. John might be quiet during the meeting, but it's only because he's thinking. He's one of the smart people in the room. And every time we have issues that have come up, John really knows what's going on and knows how to fix it. And he also possesses this incredible quality to be able to ask the questions that you have to ask people, but sort of have a happy look on his face while he's doing it and really be pleasant about it, which really is, you're laughing, but it really is a very helpful thing when you're on council. John, you put your time to council in good use. You said you helped pass the CRA, the Community Reinvestment Act, tax, a tax evasion program, rebranding project that explained the road problem, the road program to curb, thank you very much, that's a big thing. And you've helped form the Facilities and Infrastructure Subcommittee. So I'm so happy that you're on council and that you get to go on again, and I'm honored to be able to give you the oath. So let's do this. I, John Rock...
I, John Rock.
...do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
...to support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The charter and ordinances of the city of University Heights.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of University Heights.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
As a councilperson of the city of University Heights.
As a councilperson of the city of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next up is council member-elect Teresa Marshall, again with the administration of Magistrate Mark Wiseman.
So I've only known Teresa, she got appointed by council, also like John, she was appointed, which means that also she could get everybody to agree on her as a good candidate for council. Some people don't know how important that really is, but I've already known, I can always tell that they picked the good one. That's because Teresa's so concerned about the city and to make sure that everybody continues to be proud of her and the job that she's doing, which is very impressive. You know, when you're on council, you can show up to council meetings and you can just say, are the streets plowed? Are the leaves picked up? Then go home and not worry about it. But Teresa really has this understanding and this need to understand what's going on behind the issues and behind the scenes and what those problems are. And she's already talked to me about some of those problems she wants to look into and fix. And that's really what you want as a councilperson, because so many questions have to be asked and so much stuff has to be done to it. It really helps somebody who wants to figure out really everything that's going on and sort of get their hands in. So that's very impressive. Teresa's a veteran of the Navy. Thank you so much for your service, and a retired teacher. She taught K through 3, which tells you how much patience she has, because if we could have her over here and teach kids and that, that's really impressive. And I'm sure your daughters can probably attest to the amount of patience that you have. She's been in public service for over 30 years, highlighted by the position you hold as the Community Service Chair of the Eastern Star Organization, which is an sister organization to the Masons. So that's very impressive. Nice that you've been involved in public service all this time, that's really what you meant, because when you're on council, it's really a public service. You know, you spend a lot of time and then a lot of time that's, you know, it's not the most, to have full the most thank you. So it's very impressive that you have sort of this background. Teresa's proud to act that she helped improve the recent charter amendment which focuses on non-discrimination in her daughters, Shaquila Marshall and June Kane. This is Shaquila. This is one of her daughters. June's not here, right?
Yes.
I'm sure they're proud of you. They're probably beaming at this moment to watch you go on council. It's very impressive. I asked a few of your colleagues how they would describe you, Teresa. They said you were thorough, collaborative, respectful, committed, and you backed with integrity. All great traits. And it just shows you how much your colleagues still believe in you after you went on council for a while, which is great. No doubt that the next time, I swear you wouldn't have a lot more to talk about, but let's get to it. I, Teresa Marshall...
I, Teresa Marshall.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...to support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of University Heights.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of University Heights.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...as councilmember of the city of University Heights.
As councilmember of the city of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Let's have one more round of applause for our council members. Magistrate Wiseman, before you leave, we do have two more swearings to do, and Mr. Michael was asked if he would be so kind as to do him the honor of swearing him in at this time.
I've known Luke for years. Luke and I run the Charter Review Committee for University Heights in the 1900s, I'm sure. I hope there was internet at that time, but we got to know each other. Funny that we're both sort of hanging around council super. Luke is everything that anybody could want in a law director. I mean this from my heart. He is smart, he's thorough, he's pointed, he's determined. He knows what the right answer is even when somebody, doesn't matter who, really calls him in his office and harangues him about something that they think he maybe should back off on, and he stands his ground. I cannot, I don't think it's possible for me to have more respect for Luke. He is just, I think it's very impressive that I'm so glad you were the law director. Nine years, wow. So my honor of this, where are you in? I, Luke McConville...
I, Luke McConville.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...to support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of University Heights.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of University Heights.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...as law director of the city of University Heights.
As law director of the city of University Heights.
So help me God.
And we have one more. We're going to swear in Clerk of Council Kelly Thomas. And in the newly-found tradition of ambushing former members of council, I would like Judge Goldberg to come back up and swear in Kelly Thomas, if you would do the honors, please.
I'll be ambushed. So I had the distinct honor and privilege of working with Kelly Thomas. I was on city council for three terms, and we got to spend every other Monday night together, and it was wonderful. But I've gotten to see Kelly really grow into this job. And it's, you know the city better than anyone. You're our eyes and ears, and you do a wonderful job. And also, I keep up with her on Facebook. Tyler has gotten, what is he doing now?
He's marketing.
Jay Morgan case. I remember him when we had the diversity meetings at Garrity, and he was so little, and we'd bring him, and he was so wonderful, and he had raised such a wonderful, wonderful son. Luke's so much to be proud of. She's also, has an athletic prowess. I mean, she is unbelievable. You're like lifting weights. I don't know, you're doing a lot of different things, and your progress is amazing. You look fabulous, and so you're fit to serve her clerk of council. But really, it's an honor to be able to do this and come full circle as well. So, I'm ready? I, Kelly M. Thomas...
I, Kelly M. Thomas.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...to support the Constitution and laws...
To support the Constitution and laws.
...of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
...of the state of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances...
And the charter and ordinances.
...of the city of University Heights.
City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...as clerk of council...
As clerk of council.
...of the city of University Heights.
Of the city of University Heights.
So help me God.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank one more time the members of the bench who reside here in University Heights who participated in this evening's ceremonies. Judge Francine Goldberg, Judge Anne Walton Keller, and Magistrate Mark Wiseman. Thank you once again. One more round of applause. And without further ado, I'd like to call this meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the room?
Mr. P.
Here.
Mrs. Sax.
Here.
Mr. Cootie.
Here.
Mrs. Wise.
Here.
Mr. Ra.
Here.
Mrs. Marshall.
Here.
Mrs. Wizer.
Here.
May all members of our presence, will you please join me in deciding the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the Constitution, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item listed on the agenda is a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing a legal litigation matter. When we get out of that executive session, the next item on the agenda then would be the installation nomination of Vice Mayor North of Office and nomination of a pro 10 member of council. If we want to keep that under, then I would ask then for a motion to enter the executive session. Mr. Kleiner is here. I think it will be brief. If for some reason we want to take that out of order, we have to entertain that motion as well. Would you like to, I'm sorry, Ms. what?
It's brief. Move to enter into...
I think it will be brief.
...executive session.
Yes.
For purposes of discussing a legal litigation matter.
Very good. Is there a second? I'll set. Second, I'm Mr. Rock. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the room?
Mr. P.
Aye.
Mrs. Sax.
Aye.
Mr. Cootie.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Ra.
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall.
Aye.
Mrs. Wizer.
Aye.
Very good. We're entering an executive session in the other room. Everyone else is welcome to stay here. We will be brief, I think, and then we'll be right back. Good rest of you, John. Thank you. Thank you.
No, I love it. Even though I don't play, I don't play that. I'll find us re-raise. I'm like, yeah, it's a value for you. So, but usually we shouldn't have to play this anymore.
Yes.
Two months.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not talking about, I can't actually approach them.
No. So I don't need help.
Hi, I was, um, so the software. I can use. Jesse. Yes. I'm very surprised. I didn't tell me. Very.
I would have had to go off that house. Do not like that.
Oh, we got it.
Uh, it's, it's See, we told you it would be very hard. Is there a motion returned to exit executive session and return to regular session?
So.
Motion by Mrs. Sacks. Is there a second? Second by Mr. King. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Coody.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Very good. We are back in regular session. The next item on the agenda is installation, the nomination of the Vice Mayor and oath of office. The floor is open for nominations for Vice Mayor. Is there a nomination? Mr. Rock.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a nomination for Vice Mayor to my colleague, Michelle Weiss, Councilwoman Michelle Weiss. Michelle has been serving this council for eight years and just got elected to a third term. And I actually had to go back and look. The Board of Elections keeps ten years of records. And my colleague, Michelle Weiss, got the most votes in the last 10 years of any other country person in the city. So I feel that is such a more than a reason enough to nominate you. Additionally, Michelle has done such a wonderful job on the city council, keeping us all together, organized. Does very well with compromise, collaboration. Goes to just about every single meeting, mini-meeting and outside organization meetings. And I see the planning commission meetings and everything. So her effort on this board is tremendous. And I want to see her continue to serve in the capacity that she is in as Vice Mayor. So I'd accept that nomination.
Very good. We have the nomination of Michelle Weiss as Vice Mayor. Do you accept the nomination? Very good. So, Michelle Weiss accepts nomination. Do we need a second? Is there a second?
I'll say.
A second by Ms. Marshall.
Mayor, you would ask if there are any other nominations?
Yes. Are there any other nominations for Vice Mayor? Well, if there are none, then, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll on the nominations on the floor?
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Coody.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Judge Goldberg, would you please join us for the affirmation of Michelle Weiss as Vice Mayor? This is a horse.
It's like a, it was like a special thing out there. Ready? I, Michelle Weiss.
I, Michelle Weiss.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
to support the Constitution and laws
To support the Constitution and laws.
of the United States of America.
of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws.
of the State of Ohio.
of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances
And the Charter and ordinances.
of the City of University Heights.
of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
as Vice Mayor
as Vice Mayor
of the City of University Heights.
of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mrs. Weiss. The gavel is yours.
So, Mayor, I think you should stay at that.
Should I stay?
Yes, you should stay there.
She wants you with that entourage.
The mayor should stay at that.
She's got the gavel. All right. We have the gavel.
Now we have the nomination of the pro tempore. Did I announce that correctly, Mr. Rock?
Close enough.
I have pronounced it correct.
Pro tempore.
Pro tempore. Is there a nomination on the floor? I would like to make the nomination. Mr. Rock has been just as senior as I have been on the council. He's been in office for eight years. He's on his third term, but it actually is not his final because he was nominated for the first, for his first term. So he's kind of going to run again. He just keep that in mind. He has, as Mr. Weiseman has said, the fabulous job on council is his experience, his professional experience, I think, is an asset to the council as well. And I would, I would love it if he would accept this position.
I do. Thank you very much.
Is there a second nomination? Is there another nomination for the pro tempore? Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Coody.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Rock, congratulations. So I believe that Mr. Rock also has to say a oath, correct? So, Mr. McConville, is it possible that you can do that?
Make sure I get the title correct.
Me too. I, John Rock.
I, John Rock.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
to support the Constitution and laws
To support the Constitution and laws.
of the United States of America.
of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws
Constitution and laws.
of the State of Ohio.
of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances
And the Charter and ordinances.
of the City of University Heights.
of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
as council pro tempore
as council pro tempore.
of the City of University Heights.
of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
The next item on the agenda is the reading and disposal of the journal. Are there any additions and removals from the agenda? Mrs. Thomas, we have minutes for this meeting?
Yes.
So there were the December 18th minutes from the meeting that were, you know, a little bit late. I actually didn't have a chance to review them. Were there any corrections to the minutes that anybody, or anybody left to table on? I think it got the interest of everybody reading them. They came pretty late. I brought Mrs. Weiss to table that. I moved to table the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Coody.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes are tabled until the next meeting. Okay, the next agenda item, the additions and removals from the agenda. Does anybody have any? Yes.
I would suggest that the Chair entertain a motion to remove item H from the agenda as we did dispose of the philosophy. That is, we did pass it. So to refresh council's memory, we did pass the amendment to Chapter 220, which implemented all of the necessary changes so that the Vice Mayor would chair council meetings in conforming with the Charter Amendment. And following passage, you have asked me to provide you an additional update to Chapter 20, 220, to deflect the current customs with respect to where which I will have you for the next meeting.
So, Mr. McConville, should
So, the item that's on the agenda was actually already passed at the last meeting.
So it's just a So it's not even the G L, it's just
Yeah, sure. We just Vice Mayor makes a motion to remove item H on the agenda representing ordinance 2023, number 73.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Coody.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Okay, we are now in the session of the meeting. Permit comments from the audience. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Is there, are there any comments from the audience? Thank you. If you could just state your name and address.
Sean Belt, 2292 Canterbury Road. Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I'd like to request that council members vote to override the mayor's veto on ordinance 2023, 83, authorizing transfer of funds from the General Fund to the CIC Fund. This transfer of funds is customary and should not be treated any differently. In the mayor's veto, it is stated that the CIC has a balance of $72,319.23 with no projects currently planned with that balance. Further in the veto, it is stated that there are no current projects requiring the funds. This lack of projects is not by design. The mayor also stated in his meeting that there is no resolution in sight for governance issues that he sees within the CIC. At the December 6th CIC meeting, the board talked at length about the mayor's issues. And I'm sure that the board will continue to work through the mayor's issues at the January 17th meeting. The CIC has a bright future ahead and will continue to do good work for our citizens. I urge the council to continue to support this work by keeping with the customary transfer of funds to the CIC Fund. of funds to the CIC Fund. I do.
Thank you, Mr. Belt. Are there any other comments from the audience? Thank you. Reports and communications from the air. Mr. Mayor, are there any comments?
Yes, just very briefly, Happy New Year. And I have no further report. Thank you. I'm sure I'll have a full report.
Reports and communications from City Council. Do you have a short report? From City Council. So despite the mayor unfortunately ending 2023 on a note of negativity with two vetoes to decrease the effectiveness of the CIC and bring discord amongst council of the salary disagreement, I know that council is reaching out and looking for more and looking for more positive interactions during 2024. If the mayor feels the same, he needs to reach out, like I have to him. So there's a positive discourse to move the city forward, and I'm looking forward to that. Thank you. I do see that there is, that there was an oath of office, that there was an oath of office not administered to Michael Siswa. Is that one of your calls, Ron?
He's not here this evening. I'll touch base with him and ask him how he wants to go about having a deal with the minister.
Okay, we are now doing this reports and communications from the directors. The Director of Finance, Mr. Pennington.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. I really don't have a report. We're closing both the month of December and the year 2023. I was unable to do that in two days, but I will have a more detailed report for you at the next council meeting on how things transpired in 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McConville, Department of Law.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The city is scheduled to conduct a mediation with Gaby this Thursday, January 4th, in connection with our imminent domain lawsuit for the acquisition of the property that is contiguous to our city hall canvas. In connection with our upcoming mediation, I am requesting that we hold a brief executive session at the end of the meeting so that I can update you on the latest developments and pick your brain about strategic matters heading into the mediation.
Thank you. Public safety. I can see the Chief of Police here.
And Chief Rock is on vacation, so he's, I excuse him from the meeting.
Mayor, do you have a report for him?
I have no report on behalf of the Chief of Police.
Fire, Chief Perko.
No reports on Vice Mayor. Congratulations to the vice.
Thank you. Service. Mr. Pennington.
Again, congratulations to all those who were elected. From the Public Works Department, Public Service Department, we have completed our sixth pass leaf collection throughout the city. We have now taken down our leaf machines with the exception of one. We are doing a last-minute canvass of locations that may not have been collected. There are also picking up leaves in the various city facilities to conclude the leaf collection season. On another note, the pre-contractor, Parks Tree, will begin tree removal and trimming this Thursday, and I expect that to go on for approximately as long. That is my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Sacks, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. I would like to thank you and the Service Department for doing an excellent job with regard to the leaf collection. You've been in council for two years and had zero complaints. I sincerely appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Building. Want Mr. Tutham?
Happy New Year and congratulations to all. We were successful in getting you a chief building official. He'll be starting Monday, the 8th, and I'll stick around a couple of weeks or so. I'll introduce him formally to council next council meeting, which is the 16th, I think, because of our 15th day. And his name is Mark Patterson. His daughter is a resident of University Heights. He's been at the City of Beachwood for, I think, 11 or 13 years, I forget which, but for quite a while. And a very good gentleman, knows some of the people that work for the city, and comes highly recommended. I gave four interviews, so I have thoroughly vetted him, and I believe you'll be very happy with him. Other than that, looking forward to the next couple of weeks, kind of breaking him in, and council on the 16th, looking forward to discussing the fee schedule and all that.
Thank you. And how's the community development, Mr. Engelbert?
Good evening. And Happy New Year. I just want to update you guys on the grant that we submitted to OAKA. You should be learning about its status within the next few weeks. This is the joint grant that we submitted with the City of University Heights. Other than that, I have thought of updates.
Thank you.
With respect to the next item, do you need any sense, Mr. Engelbert? Next up would be City Engineer. At the moment, we do not have a City Engineer, but I do want to take this opportunity to introduce council, I want to go into the room to Brendan Bockby, who is here on behalf of Wallace-Tanshaw. And we will be taking up the issue of the Wallace-Tanshaw contract, the City Engineer, in the regular part of the agenda. So, thank you, Ms. Bockby, for being here. You're welcome. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Communications and civic engagement, Mr. Hooker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weiss. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. One item I'd like to report on this evening is City of University Heights is now on the social media site, Threats. This replaces our presence on Twitter, which we, well, it's abandoned a year ago. So, Threats, if you're not familiar with it, honestly, it's almost exactly like Twitter, except it's went by Google Meta, which does Instagram and does Facebook. So, we officially launched today. We already have almost 300 followers, and we're going to keep promoting that through our media, through Mosaic, through the Friday News, and just another way for us to get out, and that's just all the good things that everyone is doing here in the city. And personally, I want to thank all of you for the progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hooker. Economic Development, Mrs. Tucker.
Good evening and Happy New Year, all in council. Just to give an update on one of the businesses, the Sauce, Councilwoman Marshall, we were asking about that. They have been closed. Not really citing a reason why, they have now officially closed. That was due to a dispute with the property owner. However, the property owner is already in discussions with another party who is interested in occupying that space. So I'm hoping that that vacancy will leave the others soon. And that is all I have for tonight. I'll ask you any questions.
Thank you. Okay, that wraps up our director's reports. We're now getting close where we are going to be. The mayor will be appointing our BZA and ARB candidates. I will, there were resumes that were sent about a little bit late to council. The one thing that I will point out before I turn some discussion over to the mayor is that currently I'm liaising to BZA. I can attest that Mr. Jaffe, Mr. Goodman, and Mr. Caleb are all assets to the community on BZA. I can't tell you that they have, that their professionalism, their expertise, the way that they work together is, is just excellent. They serve our community very well, and I'm pleased that they all have agreed to come back. Mayor, I'd like to give the microphone orders, you to discuss further.
Certainly. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. The, it is my honor to speak, hope before you appointments for confirmation, R.A. Jaffe, Kevin Goodman, and Matthew Caleb, they've all been experienced on the BZA. They are all returning members, coming back for another two-year term. They all know the, our zoning code, such as it is, but we're working on that. And they all know the appropriate standards upon which variances and other matters that are brought before the BZA are already considered, the practical difficulties test and so on. So, so they've been exemplary, their attendance is, is just good, their work is good, better than good, and I didn't have to look very far to ask each of them first, you know, would you like to come back? And it would be honored to have you back, and each one of them said that they were honored to be asked back. So, this is, this kind of falls under the heading of an April, don't fix it, and that is our BZA. So, delighted, Mr. Goodman and Mr. Jaffe and Mr. Caleb are all here this evening. I know that Mr. Caleb had another matter where he, I'm just grateful all three of you could make it. And if anybody doesn't know that yet, I know we have a couple of newer council members. They are here this evening. If you should be, would like to come up and introduce yourselves briefly, please do, especially to Ms. Wiseman and Ms. Marshall. And Happy New Year, gentlemen. Well, actually, I can do it. Ken.
Hi, it's us. I'm R.A. Jaffe.
Kevin Goodman. Matthew Caleb.
We're happy to answer your questions. It's been a pleasure for all of us to be of service. Better we can say.
And Ms. Wiseman.
I get to pick up Mr. Jaffe. Who I know, and I know you do good work. Oddly enough, how long have you been involved with BZA? Because you go back to the role too, don't you?
Yeah, then I got thrown off for a while, but I can't.
Yeah, I know. Years on your role too. How many?
How many years?
How many years? Can you remember?
I don't know, but the compensation's still pretty low, so we're okay.
Yeah, I know. What was it, eight?
Oh, all told, yeah.
Eight, twelve, stuff like that.
Oh, no, ten years.
That's kind of institutional history that probably plays very, very well for what all three of you do. And I think you should be recognized for that, and I truly do.
It's our pleasure. The truth is, the institution keeps its own excellent records. And that really, you know, when we go back and we hear a matter, we can go back to 20, 30 years of history to see what's been going on. We work well together. Everybody has their niche specialties. I don't want to speak on behalf of Michigan, but, you know, we work well together.
That's great to hear.
Very good chair. Very good manager.
And it's wonderful to hear that the mayor has also perhaps reconsidered the idea of having experience on these boards that goes back in time in order to build forward on it. I mean, I know it's dynamite for BZA, and I'm sure for some of our other boards and commissions as well. So I think it's great.
Mr. McConville.
I just want to go for the record how much the city has benefited from Mr. Jaffe's leadership, in particular on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and also from the thoughtful and careful analysis that we get at each and every meeting from Mr. Goodman and Mr. Caleb. Mr. Jaffe is right, the board works very well together. They are extremely thoughtful, they protect the interests of the city, they are invested in fairness for all the applicants, whether they are individuals or institutional, and they're as sophisticated as any board of zoning appeals could hope to be. So, I'm so glad that you're here, that you're willing to serve.
So when you want to bring us back to challenging universities, we're, we're ready.
Thank you. Just wanted to build on something Ms. Wiseman said. I was delighted to reappoint R.A. Jaffe shortly after my election as mayor to fill a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals, bringing him back and bringing back in the institutional knowledge that he brought. But I'm also delighted and take, if I may, take credit for bringing in three other people, Mr. Goodman, Mr. Caleb, and though he's outside, Mr. Lloyd, who were all good people. And none of these positions are lifetime appointments, but it is great to have a mix of longtime perspective and newer perspective that reflects, you know, the changing and dynamic community that we have. Ms. Jawwinski, the only one I have not mentioned, also providing some of that institutional memory. I do not recall how long she has served, but I know that she was serving under Mayor Infeld. I don't know if she was, she started under Mayor Infeld or under Mayor Rothschild. Mayor Infeld? Oh, Mayor Infeld, okay. And Ms. Jawwinski has been a valued part of the body as well, and has been renewed continuously around.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good luck in your work. Thank you.
There are other comments? I will make a motion to appoint R.A. Jaffe to the Board of Zoning Appeals for two years.
Second.
Second from Ms. Wiseman. There any comments? Mrs. Thomas, you call the room.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Coody.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mr. Jaffe, you're appointed, thank you. I will also make a motion to appoint Mr. Goodman to the Board of Zoning Appeals for two years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and second by Mr. King. Any comments? Mrs. Thomas, you call the room.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Coody.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Wiseman.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Goodman. We'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Caleb to the Board of Zoning Appeals for two years. Is there a second? Sure, let's do a second first, how many comments? Awesome. Mrs. Marshall made a second. There comments?
Thank you. I'm very happy that Mr. Caleb is appointed. And I have a question for Mr. McConville. In my work, I actually work with Mr. Caleb. He is at the Federation, I'm at the Family Service, and we work with grants and funding. Is there any conflict of interest to me voting on this?
Does he influence how much money you're paid by those?
Okay, I mean, but, okay, he's saying no. But I'm looking to the other end of the giving, and I'm on the receiving side. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Thomas, you call the room.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Coody.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mrs. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Wiseman.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Caleb.
Gentlemen, I will swear all three of you in at the next meetings that you attend. Thank you.
The next agenda item is appointment of Ryan Brodeus to the Architectural Review Commission for three years. I don't know if Mr. Brodeus is behind this.
Mr. Brodeus, if you are, yes, I'm sorry. Very good. Would you go up to the podium, please?
Please, I'd like to.
If I may, thank you. And Mr. Brodeus is an architect who lives here in University Heights. He is more longer registered in Virginia, is registered low also in Ohio. And his resume has been distributed. And Mr. Brodeus, would you say if you worked?
I'm delighted to be here in University Heights. I've worked, and as the resume suggests, I grew up in South Carolina, I worked in Virginia most of my life, in Maryland as well, in Baltimore. I moved here six years ago, a little bit more than that now, because I met my wife, who was from the Heights, and we decided we were located, and we're pleased to do so.
And, um, his resume hasn't been distributed, but Mr. Brodus, would you say if you worked?
I'm delighted to be here in University Heights. Uh, I've worked and, as the resume suggests, I grew up in South Carolina, I worked in Virginia most of my life, in Maryland as well, in Baltimore. Uh, I moved here six years ago, a little bit more than that now, um, because I met my wife who was from the Heights, and we decided we were located, and we're pleased to do so. Uh, I look forward to, uh, serving the city, uh, to seeing the, the new and remodeled and renovated and rehabilitated structures. That's my specialty, by the way, is historic architecture and rehabilitation, and I believe very strongly that building reuse is something that Ohio is a leader in, and, uh, it saves our resources and it builds on the existing order. I'm thrilled to be able to help.
And if I may continue, thank you, Mr. Brodus, for your willingness to serve, and, and just as a, a matter of housekeeping, this would be for a term that officially began February of last year. So, so any motion that we would make this evening with regard to his appointment, that term began in February of 2023, and this would be for the remainder of that three-year term.
Mr. Robb.
So would we need to amend the agenda so that it does not say for three years then, it would just say for the remainder of the vacant term?
Yeah, I would agree that by motion. I don't think you need to amend the agenda, but I'm just clarifying your motion.
Make a motion, yeah, okay. And then, just a question for the mayor, uh, since there's still a vacancy by, by our, uh, ordinances, the, uh, Architecture Review Board also has a, uh, alternate position, so you're still a member, so you have alternate position.
Yeah, I, I don't have an alternate for you. So, this is for the vacant, uh, full-time position, I guess for lack of a, you know, not the alternate.
And then, um, Mr. Brodus, am I saying that correctly?
Brodus.
Brodus.
Brodus, thank you. Um, as being a member of the Architecture Review Board, if you're so, uh, confirmed on this board, um, you also get to serve on the, uh, we have a couple different subcommittees. We have the zoning subcommittee, in which we invite members to manage the Architecture Review Board for zoning appeals, and that, uh, zoning subcommittee reviews, uh, right now we're going through a comprehensive zoning redo with a consultant who's helping us assist in that, uh, reforming of our, of our zoning.
Is it for, is it for a foreign base code?
I'm sorry?
Foreign base code?
That, that's something that we'll be discussing as well, yeah. So, um, as a member of the ARB, you're invited to participate in those meetings, and we also have a, a subcommittee for facilities and infrastructure to look at things that are, like, you mentioned the facilities.
Sure.
Um, your expertise, if you're so confirmed, uh, is valuable on that committee, and so, uh, it doesn't just stop at the ARB, it would ask for participation, among other things.
That's, that's very good, that's very suitable.
Great.
Before, Mr. Booty, did you have a question? Before, um, I, I ask for any motions, Mayor, I just would like to suggest, since there is still an alternate position, if maybe you can put out a, a request for, from the residents, um, for, for that alternate position, like, have another one passing through Ohio.
Yes, certainly. Uh, we were already planning in the Friday E-News to remind folks of the volunteer page on, uh, universityhighs.com, that's universityhighs.com/volunteer, and, uh, we can go ahead, I think, and, uh, add to that, that we're, you know, among the things we're looking for specifically would also be, uh, alternates for, uh, architectural review. So, thank you.
And, Ms. Weiser.
I have two more things, actually. Um, since there's going to be two positions up for appointment slash reappointment in February, will you, uh, contact those members, let them know if they need to reapply or to gauge their interest, or are they, uh, expected to do that on their own? What, what would be the protocol?
Uh, yeah, I will be reviewing that shortly and, and will contact them accordingly.
And you'll contact them?
I will contact them.
Okay.
Or I will absolutely contact them, but they will be contacted.
Okay. And then, one other thing, there was, uh, an application in the past that, uh, due to perceived, uh, conflict of interest, uh, that person was not selected, but I can announce today that I don't work for the firm anymore, on which the applicant continues to work, and met a different firm now, so I expect to perceive, uh, conflict is no longer.
If, if I may, yes, I, I'm aware that, uh, you had a change in, in your employment situation, and that, uh, that particular applicant, uh, was suitable in many ways, and I would be happy to consider her again in the future. Thank you. So, uh, in fact, uh, was, she was somebody that was intended to contact, so, great.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to appoint Brian, I don't want to mispronounce her name, Brodus, um, to the Architecture Review Commission, um... Just a note here for the remainder of the vacant term, um, that begins on 2/23. Is that right?
Yeah, February, February first.
So, you made the motion, or you made your asking, so.
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Weiser and second by Mr. Robb. Are there any comments? Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mr. P.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Booty.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Robb.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Goodman. We'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Caleb to the Board of Zoning Appeals for two years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and, second by Mr. King. Are there any comments? And Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mr. P.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Booty.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Robb.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Goodman. We'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Caleb to the Board of Zoning Appeals for two years. Is there a second? Sure, let's do a second for Thomas to comment. Awesome. Okay. Mrs., Ms. Marshall, um, made a second. Are there comments?
Thank you. I, I'm very happy that Mr. Caleb is, um, appointed, and I have a question for Mr. McConville. In my work, I actually, um, work with Mr. Caleb. He is at, uh, the Federation, I'm at the Family Service, and we work with grants and funding. Is there any conflict of interest to me voting on this?
Does he influence how much money you're paid by those?
No, okay, I mean, but, okay, he's saying no. But I'm looking to the other end of the giving, and I'm on the receiving side.
You know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mr. P.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Booty.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Robb.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mr. P.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Booty.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mr. P.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Booty.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mr. P.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Booty.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Robb.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mr. P.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Booty.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Robb.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mr. P.
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Booty.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Robb.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Thomas, you call the roll.
Mr. Brodus, I will swear you, and the next ARB meeting, which is a week from this Thursday,
at 8:00 AM in this room. Thank you.
The next agenda item is E-Ordinance 2024-01, authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Wallace Panter Group for the provision of engineering services as city engineer in a clearing in emergency. Um, Mayor Brad, I will give the, the agenda item over to you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I'd also like to share the floor here in this instance with Mr. Paddington, uh, our service director, who is also a, a PE, and, and also with, with Ms. Lockey, if she would join us at the podium. Um, we had, uh, three firms apply and, and provide statements of qualification. Mr. Paddington and I scored them, and, and Wallace Panter, formerly known as McKay Engineering, is the, uh, was our top choice, both Mr. Paddington and I, and accordingly, we met with representatives of Wallace Panter, including, um, Dan Wallace, uh, Kim Kerber, and, and Ms. Lockey, uh, who is here tonight, and, uh, it, we came to terms in principle with respect to, uh, an agreement, uh, for engineering services, uh, for up to five years, for one year at a time, as per ordinance and the, uh, RFQ that we put out. Uh, the, we have in the packet, uh, the statement of qualifications that was submitted by Wallace Panter. Uh, I will say that McKay Engineering, uh, much like, uh, father and son, Chuni, Stephen and Joe, um, the Mackays were the engineers of Wilbrook Heights for perhaps even longer than the Chunys were engineers here, which almost seems impossible, but seems to be the case. Uh, the difference here, though, is that the Mackays have retired, their engineering firm is now part of the Wallace Panter family. Wallace Panter is based out of Hermitage. Uh, they also have, have, over time, acquired, I think it was Ridgefield Group, as well at, Richfield, thank you, which, uh, Mr. Chuni spoke admirably of, said that they were a very good former competitor of GPT, and that, uh, and, and also a, a Hayes Landscaping Architecture Firm, uh, out of St. Clair'sville, Ohio. So, so, uh, we have here a firm that has offices over two states, uh, that draws on numerous expertise, uh, in, in various areas. Uh, this group does engineering work not only for Wilbrook Heights, but also for Fairview Park and, uh, Rocky River, and I feel like one more that's escaping me is the one on the west side, maybe that is it, maybe I on the west is number four. Uh, Kim Kerber is the primary at the other three cities with, I think Brenda backing her up, but here we get the honor of having Brenda be our number one, which I'm very excited about, and Kim will be her backup. So, we have somebody who has been mentioning, or I think, well, he lived with McKay, I think, for eighteen years, seventeen years?
Yes, someone on eighteen.
Okay. And, and, uh, and though this, I think constitutes your first assignment as the principal as city engineer, uh, you bring, you are more than ready for this based upon your experience and have the backup of Kim Kerber, who has been doing this also for McKay and Wallace Panter. So, uh, we had some very productive discussions and, uh, and we have, uh, an agreement that we've negotiated, we did some back and forth, the assistance, of course, are longer than McConville. And, Mr. Paddington, I, I know I haven't said everything, but what would you like to add?
Oh, uh, in a variety of various firms, uh, the thing that really stood out about Wallace Panter is the fact that they did have multiple offices. One of the other firms we looked at had a single office, which, uh, doesn't always give you the, the support staff that you're looking for in a city engineer. Wallace Panter definitely had the support staff there, uh, the years of experience for Paul Brenda, as well as, uh, Kim Kerber, were, uh, excellent in regards to review, and our evaluation status, look at the primary engineer, the, who would be the backup, the qualifications of the firm, who they've done in the past. Looking at all of that, Wallace Panter was by far our best candidate.
And I would add that, that I don't want to disparage any of our applicants who submitted, of course, and I don't think you did either here, but I, I do want to say that, that I do like the idea of, of University Heights signing on to a growing firm that is on the upswing, uh, which has not yet, in my view, reached full maturity in spite of all of this experience, and that we can get in at this level and be a big part of, of Wallace Panter's presence of greater weight. So, uh, I'm looking forward to doing some very good work with, uh, with Ms. Lockey. And, and Brenda, Alan and I have done all the talking, I'm sure you have something you'd like to add, so please.
Well, I have been with McKay Engineering since, uh, 2006, but I was also with them from 1994 to 1998, shortly after I graduated from college, and I went to, they were a small firm, like, like you said, a father and son, um, so I did go to a, a larger firm, and I got eight years of experience there, and then, um, when I did go back in 2006, it was on a part-time basis because I had two small children. Over the years, I, um, began working more hours as my kids got older, and I've been full-time for a number of years. I do enjoy what I do. I do a lot, I do a lot of municipal engineering behind the scenes, so I'm ready to, um, be, like the mayor said, upfront, and I'm here for you guys and for your residents, so if you guys have questions, please let me know.
Thank you. And thank you.
Hey. Um, there's one question in the contract that I, I do want to start off with and then help with the question to, to council. Um, I don't know if this is a question for the law director or for the mayor. Um, on page number two, letter K, says the city engineer shall attend all regularly scheduled city council meetings. The city engineer shall attend city council committee meetings and any additional public legislative or administrative meetings only when requested by the mayor. So in the past, um, Mr. Chuni was coming to committee meetings when requested by the committee, which happened frequently, I mean, there were finance, many finance meetings when he came to, and there were other, um, committee meetings. Um, I would hope that that language can be changed before we, um, we pass this contract.
If I may, if I may, uh, yeah, uh, I did not, this was an oversight on my part when we were going over this, um, if, if it's all right with, with Wallace Panter, and, and that's something that we can, you know, work out, you know, the next, you know, couple of days here, uh, I certainly would have no objection to saying, you know, engineer shall attend city council meetings as, uh, you know, when requested by council, and any additional public legislative or administrative meetings when requested by.
Or, or council.
Yeah.
only when requested by the council, then, then these are, these would be, that would include the committee the whole. And if you have the change.
If we're changing that and deleting the only one requested by the mayor for those committee meetings, I'm good with it.
Right, I'm, I'm not, the, the only one requested by the mayor pertained to additional public, it says here, additional public legislative or administrative meetings. Maybe legislative is not necessary in that clause because it's covered by, I don't know if there are any legislative meetings other than the city council.
Yeah, I, I think maybe get rid of the word legislative and divide it into two sentences. And then I think you've allowed the council the opportunity to have the engineer attend any one of your committee meetings if you feel necessary.
Yeah, no, this, this wasn't intended to be exclusionary to that point. It was intended to be exclusionary to not require the city engineer to attend each and every meeting by contract when there are only certain meetings, and then only certain meetings of certain committees at times. There could be a time when we would need the city engineer to build a housing meeting, but as you said, more likely than not, not usually.
No, probably very, very rarely.
Okay, good, I think we cleared that up.
So we will clear that up before we.
This is it.
Thank you. Very much looking forward to this. Your, the company is very impressive, the professionals are very impressive, and it's very exciting. I'm at note, though, I'm noticing that there are five points that end with the words, when requested by the mayor, which, you know, I'd like the council to just be aware of them, maybe have some discussion around that. When these points might have fiscal component, it still may need to have some consultation with council. So for instance, review the design, I, review the design and observe construction of public improvement, perform improvements performed by the city or by entities other than the city when requested by the mayor. I'm not sure, it seems like there could be some financial components. Available to departments or divisions of the city, okay? That, that seems administration, that's J. But L, the engineer, show professional surveyors, consult this, pre-design as requested by the mayor. Is that in addition? Is that, will that result in a change order? I'm just not sure if, as requested by the mayor, or like I said, I count five, it might also need to have component in consultation or some other party awarding with council. Then there's a financial component that could result from that action.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mrs. Sacks, for bringing that up. To be clear, items A through M are retainer items, so they're all covered by the monthly retainer. So there isn't any additional financial implication. It is, you know, some months will have more work for them, for the engineers to do than others. So, but, but these items that are A through M are all included in the base retainer amount. Now, when we get to the non-retainer, N, O, and P, there is one section that on letter O does say when requested by the mayor, but it's all subject then to letter P, which does, which does reference the mayor's spending authority and coming back to council if we were to do something that is in excess of, of my spending authority. And, you know, then, as you pointed out, we would need to come before the council with comparative projects that fall under, under the non-retainer section.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Eck.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to ask you a couple of questions. If you could give us a little information about the firm, you mentioned it was a father-son arrangement. Who is the ownership, ownership structure today?
Today, we're totally Wallace Panter Group. So they're at, like the mayor said, they're out of Ferbidge, Pennsylvania. But we have multiple offices in Ohio and Pennsylvania. And I think because of the pandemic in 2020, we really learned how to, like, work remotely. And we do pull resources from each of the, the different offices when we need to.
I mean, who are the owners? Who are the equity holders for the firm?
Dan Wallace and Brian Panter.
Okay. And so I just wanted to ask that question since I'm just seeing them on the ownership track. No, okay. I prefer to not have the owner be on our day-to-day.
Right.
As their equity holders of the firm can make decisions and, you know, better for the firm. So thankfully, you do not have it included. My next question was regarding the retainer items. It appears that this is similar to the retainer items that our former city engineer had on their contract. And so my question, maybe this might be for the finance director, was, do you remember how much, or do you know off the top of your head what the retainer payment is to Mr. Chuni?
I believe that is $12,000. It's at the end of 2023, but that retainer is to be paid.
Right.
This, I'm assuming, is paid as a contract.
In contract sum. So your $12,000 per year, thousand a month, right? Plus overs, employer tax.
Yeah, any kind of associated tax that goes along with payroll would have been paid.
So maybe $18,000 a year roughly?
Right, 15.
15. The only concern I have here is that the retainer for this is $6,000 per month, which is $72,000 per year, which is more than quadrupling the fee for retainer services, when the retainer services, from what I'm reading, seem to be consistent with what we've had this whole time. So I guess what I'd like to know is, what are we going to get for that additional $60,000 for retainer items?
I don't know if it's fair to compare this contract to GPD's contract. I mean, GPD was here for, oh, for, since 1978, or GPD were here since, I think there was a, perhaps a certain family discount that came along, you know, for a while, you know, we're back out in the open market. You know, this, this is the retainer fee. I, I do feel like we're going to get value and quality out of Wallace Panter and out of Ms. Mokki. It is more than what we're paying before, but I think we all assumed we were being paid for. And that is the, that is the retainer fee that they proposed and which I recommend we accept.
So they propose the retainer fee and you just accept it?
Of course. And, you know, that's in their RFP.
SOQ, but.
Yes, state qualifications, SOQ.
Typically, at this juncture, when a consultant submits an SOQ, it is up to the owner, which is the city, to negotiate that contract. So I'm a little concerned that the fee had more than quadrupled without any back and forth, and I still haven't had any clarity as to what more we'll get out of this contract than our previous one. So I, I want to know, what are we going to get for the additional $60,000?
We're going to get engineering services.
That we didn't get before?
The GPD is normal with us. They weren't a choice, they did not apply.
So what I'm hearing is you received a proposal and you accepted it. And it's more than quadrupled, this is something that we haven't even budgeted. And there's no additional services in the retainer scope. Now, I can understand if you want to change the retainer scope to include things that we didn't consider, that, that has a value to it. That I can understand. But to go from $15,000 a year to $72,000 without any change of scope, and it has a rider in here for a 3% increase every year, I have a little bit of heartburn for that, because, you know, if you just share responsibility with the city, that's something they have to look at.
Okay, I, I understand that you're having some sticker shock. I think they're worth it. I think that Wallace Panter will be worth $6,000 a month. I never believed that we'd find anybody for why Joe Chuni was charging us before, which was one of my concerns, when things happen such as to make things inhospitable for Mr. Chuni to continue.
So typically, how this works, the public service, when myself, as an architect submit proposals, we do what's called lowest of best. So you go through the interview process, you narrow the field down to three professionals, which there were three professionals who applied. Go through this interview process, and you pick your top-rated firm to go into a negotiation with. Now, it sounds like there wasn't much of a negotiation. However, when there is a proposal that exceeds your expectation, you have the ability to go to the second-best pick to get a quote from them. And I think in the interest of the taxpayers here, because this is quadrupling the price, we should at least get a quote from the other two firms because of the substantial increase in what we were expecting. If it weren't for that, I would be inclined to entertain this, but because this is how the state operates, how the federal government operates, we should operate at the same parameters where we go back to the second-rated team to get a quote from them. That's the one thing. Hold on one second, I'm thinking of what my other question was. Yes, non-retainer items. So it appears from the reading here, and I'm, I'm excited that this was included, the work that we had done in, between the mayor, myself, vice mayor, Mr. Chuni, resident, couple residents, to include, and then council will approve this, to include that design fees between $0 to $14,999 can happen with the mayor's authority, that's fine. Design fees between $15,000 and $49,999 would require council approval because it's above the spending authority of the mayor. And then design fees above $50,000 would go out for additional fits. So I'm, I'm glad that they, in here, I want to make sure that it's clear that your retainer items does not include design engineering. And when you want, like, to do, when you're called upon to do design engineering and you submit a proposal, understanding that anything within those thresholds would have to be met in a certain way, either through the public bidding process or by approval of council, depending where it is within the threshold. And one other thing is, as we go through our budgeting process, it is important that we understand not only the estimated cost of construction for a public works project, roads, sewers, whatever, to also have a full understanding of what those design fees would be, so that we can budget accordingly. And then we would have a better understanding of timing and when these have to go out of it, et cetera. Those are my comments. We need a city engineer. However, I'm not inclined to just approve one with four X the cost. I think we need to take a look at what some of the other bits are. That's how the state and federal government does it, I'm just going to say that.
Mr. Pennington?
This is a question from Mr. Kennedy. For your, I don't know how far back your records can go. What, how far back was, for the, what were you paying for the retainer fee for Mr. Chuni? Do you know, what, has it always been $12,000? What is it? I, I know within your bracket or what you may have access to.
As far as I'm aware, when I first arrived here, it was $10,000 a year. It was increased to 12, either last year or the year prior.
And the $10,000 was perhaps what year?
19, 20, maybe 21, I'm not sure. I don't know. Maybe it was $10,000 and then it went to $12,000.
$2,000, 21.
$2,000, 21.
Right, okay. And it was $10,000 at that moment. $10,000 at that moment, then it was $12,000.
I believe so.
So.
Could be a caveat there, though, that GPD did get a lot of work from the city, right? So we had that base, and then they were getting a lot of the small jobs because we didn't have professional service piece.
However, they, they would continue to, same arrangement, it's just the $50,000 threshold is what they're.
Ms. Weiser?
Thank you. I think you bring up a good point. It sort of was the question I wanted to ask. I truly believe we should all let Joe go in peace. I read, I wrote the resolution honoring his service, and it was heartfelt, everything I put in that resolution. Joe Chuni served this city with distinction for a lot of years. I regret that he became a political footballer. He never should have become that. That isn't how the city operates. But I think that is the past. I am curious, and I don't know if, Mr. Pennington, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but having been a part of the negotiations, I would assume you might be, or maybe, and I just totally forgot your name.
Brenda Mokki.
Pardon me?
Mokki.
Yeah, Brenda Mokki.
Mokki. I don't know if in discussion of the scope of services compared to what we were getting, is there something that was discussed that indicated an increase in what he would be providing us that would go to the increase in the cost? I think that's a very basic question, and that might have helped Councilman Rod address his concerns. I'm not saying that engineering is cheap.
If I may respond.
Yeah, please.
The engineering services were provided by GPD, provided at a significant discount, with the guarantee they were getting all the work from the city. With the request for qualifications we put together for this project, for them to state, they put their statement of qualifications together, we took into account the new legislation in regards to the engineering services and what got bid out, what did not. For that reason, many firms did not even want to bid with the city. I, I talked with approximately 20 firms when I was on the Hattie Education Engineering Conference, mostly did not want to bid. With that being said, one firm that, that did put in their statement of qualifications only would do it on an hourly basis, which, again, would significantly run up the costs with the city.
One, I have one further question, so. My understanding is the, the amount of jobs that we actually have that exceed that $50,000 cap is few and far between. If I'm not correct on that, I certainly would like to know that because it gives me, as a new council person, a very clear understanding of what was being done that was above the $50,000 before we finally, even though that's in the title law, before we finally put it in our own ordinances and are now requiring that people comply with it. Because that also made us judicious.
So Ms. Weiser, I think some background was that GPD was basically getting everything under $15,000, and that's why the amount probably was only $12,000. And that's one of the reasons the professional service contract, professional service ordinance was, was designed, because we wanted to make sure that, that everything was fairly equitable, that was part of it. And I think that's why the base was so low. There were many, many projects that were under $14,000, $15,000 numbers. Mr. Rod?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to put into the record here that we formed this ordinance and did our workshops around the city of Shaker Heights as a model. In fact, city of Shaker Heights, in which GPD is the municipal engineer for, they have even stricter rules. It's $25,000 for public bidding, not $50,000. And I found on their website, according to the city of Shaker Heights Public Works Department, GPD received a retainer payment of $2,300 per month in the year 2022, $2,400 in 2023, $2,450 in 2024, and $2,500 in the year 2025. So they have a lot more work, they have a lot more expectations, and they're getting it for half the cost, for the half the cost. Again, Mr. Chuni had design engineering work above and below $15,000. That was what I'm hearing guaranteed. However, they were getting that, and this particular firm will still get those guaranteed projects on a project-by-project basis, so long as if they're not over $50,000. That's for the money. The money's in the design engineering. I'm a little nervous that the particular engineer will provide a proposal and it'll just get accepted without any type of negotiation, no calls to any other cities, that's something we have to remember to keep in mind. But again, this was modeled after Shaker Heights, and they already have a whole fee schedule posted right on the website.
Yeah, I, I think what's been forgotten here is that, is that GPD got all the work, and there isn't a guarantee here that, that Wallace Panter will get all the work. There's a threshold point where we're going to go out to bid, and they may not be the winning bidder. And, you know, part of what made it economically viable for GPD to give us the arrangement that they did was that they were getting all of the work without having to come back and bid again. You know, there will be work that, that, that Wallace Panter may want to bid on, that they may not win. And, and, you know, there is a premium. And, and, you know, there is a premium here with respect that they are going to be our engineer on many projects, but that at the high end, they aren't necessarily going to be having those projects. And that is a, one of the costs here is that, is that, you know, I suspect that a monthly retainer could be lower if we were to tell them that they could have all the work, but this council specifically does not want to do that and we understand that. We respect that. And we have very few bidders, we had three, none of them were close to GPD's numbers. They were all well north of what we were paying GPD. And, and we went ahead, we scored all of them, Mr. Pennington and I. And this particular firm was by far our preferred firm, our highest scoring firm. And, and this was the proposal that we were inclined to accept. And I did talk to mayors in other communities where they worked and heard only very good feedback with respect to this firm and their references check out. So I don't want it to be said and I will not let it go unchallenged that I didn't call anybody or meet with anybody. Like I met personally with Mayor Castellia on Hoover Heights with respect to the work that is being done. And, you know, I did a face-to-face on that one.
So this, this city, first of all, your firm has exceptional credentials. This has nothing to do with your firm. Nothing to do with your firm. This city has a, has a project over fifty thousand dollars maybe once every three years. So we're talking about low paying for you.
Mr. Rob? My question is, since you did say that you've got numbers north of GPD's and the other firms, what were their numbers?
So I didn't bring all the proposals here, but nobody was, everybody was much closer to where Wallace Panter is versus where GPD was. We were going to be paying, you know, considerably more no matter which of the three we were.
So they provided a fee, a fee schedule then?
Well, like Mr. Pennington said, one of them is like strictly hourly. So, so that, that's hard to compare because we would have to sit down and go through all GPD's work and some of that is, is, you know, was included under a retainer. And we don't necessarily have readily available each and every item that Joe did. And there were things that Mr. Chuni did that he just did because it was part of the retainer and, and, you know, except for the fact that it was done. We have a list of what those items were.
You're supposed to do it as part of the retainer, as a retainer form. So maybe.
It's a one-size retainer and that's what we also do.
Perhaps if we table this, you can come back with us what the other fee was since you don't have a record.
Well, this is our nominee. So even if I give you that additional information, that doesn't change who the nominee is. I'm not here to give you three different engineers to choose from. I'm giving you one. This is my nominee for city engineer. And you can give it a round and up-down vote. If we don't approve a city engineer this evening, that's going to delay the budget even longer because I need to get to work immediately with this nominee with regards to items that will be going into the budget like our roads program. I don't want to wait another day to do that. And I don't think you want me to either. And this contract is new for a year. If we don't like this in a year, we can say thank you for giving us a try and vice versa and we'll go in another direction. I think we're going to love what we're doing here.
Hold on a second. It gives you the opportunity to say no in a year, does not give this body the opportunity to say no in a year. This stated in the contract here, says by the mayor. So if you're going to hold us and the taxpayers hostage for seventy-two thousand so we can have a, I'm sorry, so we can have a budget, which we're supposed to have anyway, I might go back to the taxpayer and say that's what we decided to do. I would say we table this. I think we should at least get a proposal from the second best team, find out where we're at, what's market and appropriate. And if it is market and appropriate, great. And if it's not, then we know.
And this is simply not how it's done. We took our best, we took our best firm, we negotiated with the best firm. If we could not come to terms with this firm, we would then, and hopefully then got to the number two firm. I'm not going to go to the number two firm. I did negotiate, thank you very much. I'm not going to go to the number two firm and ask for them to write up a contract and then bring them both to you in Chinese.
I'm taking control of the meeting right now. Let me ask, let me ask, let me ask the, let me ask the engineer a question. Is there any room to negotiate this contract further with your associates?
Well, I'm going to have to take it back to my bosses. I mean, we did, we did talk, we did ask questions and we did get feedback from Mr. Chuni about some of the stuff that is in the retainer, like how many plan reviews does he do, how many this does he do, how many phone calls does he take? So we did work off a itemized average of how much time we'd be putting into the city, city work. So our number didn't just, you know, we didn't pull it just out of the air. And our hourly rates are also listed in there if you wanted to take a look at it. So I, I mean, I can, I can talk to my boss, Kim Kerber, and we can go back to the company, Dan Wallace and Brian Panter. We have a C O O that is very instrumental in our contracts, Frank. So I can talk to Frank Bridge and we can see what we can do.
I think this council is just a little shot at the price, right? So, I mean, your firm would be getting everything that is below the fifteen thousand dollar mark. You know, anything in between the fifteen thousand and the fifteen, it would come to city council, you know, for approval. You know, we would obviously would like your firm to, to get that work because we trust you. It's not a guarantee, but you would have preferential treatment to that. But we would, I mean, I think, I would like to hear from the other council members. I would like you to come back. Mayor likes your firm, you know, he chose you compared to the other two proposals. I think if there could be some flexibility in that proposal, it would be comforting to council. And we'd be more comfortable to make that decision if there could be some flexibility and a number comes down. You know, are there other comments? Does anybody else feel differently? Yeah, Ms. Marshall?
I agree that if there's some flexibility involved, then I would be willing to entertain as well. Otherwise, I would like to see the other bids. And I feel like this has nothing to do with you all. We should have seen those bids before we saw, you know, period. We should have seen those bids so that we can make an informed decision. As it stands now, if there's some negotiation involved, then, then, then I, I think that it would be worth entertaining. But I don't think it's wise to just accept it as is.
Ms. Weiser?
There are times when I feel like the adult world. I, I think sometimes council gets surprised by stuff. And unfortunately, it plays out for the people that we got surprised by. And it shouldn't. That should have the additional information and perhaps a discussion of this because of the fact that we were jumping significantly per year. Probably should have happened between the mayor and council before, ah, here, sign this contract. I understand fully that there'll be an increase. I would have difficulty with a five-year contract because of what was brought up that if, you know, yes, we'd love to see it come down a bit. If it came down a bit and it was on a one-year basis with a potential that if it came to council for renewal, we could renew it, then probably happy camper to just make sure, because we're entering uncharted waters with your firm. And reading through the material, I was impressed that there was additional services that were listed that where your firm in its various pieces and parts has expertise that I don't think GDP brought to the city. I know I teased Joe at his thing at the last meeting because we used to have ten percent curb replacement because it was a cheap way to be able to stretch our money to recirculate streets. And over the years, if you do that enough, you've got a lot of people who are residents who are paying taxes who want to aim you because they want a curb because there is no curb. And we finally fixed that. But I think there are some things the council's going to have to accept that probably are going to cost us more. Do I think a jump on this, I've got it, that's fifty-four thousand a year. I don't know if we were really getting fifty-four thousand dollars for a year on a retainer basis with Joe. Maybe, maybe not. I'm not there to deal with that, but I do think, I think asking the question and see what can happen would be good. The second thing that I would note is just bringing this in this way, Mayor. The only thing we had is a temporary operating appropriations that were based on Joe Chuni's numbers. So we don't even have the money to get you right now with what we approved to even pay them for a month or three months because there's not eighteen thousand dollars sitting in that temporary appropriation to cover what would go out for engineering services, which is one of the reasons why we all wanted the budget sooner. But that's okay. That's water under the dam. I think council and rock brought up a very good point. That's a huge jump.
Okay. Are there any other?
Would you mind if I, as in person, we work both at another community as, as an engineer and as someone who worked for a consulting engineering firm prior to that, I can tell you right now that project-wise, you had to figure at least twenty percent into the design cost for design, construction, inspection on any project you do. Really looked at that, any project three hundred thousand above, you're already, actually twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand above, which would be your waterline projects, your street program, those projects will all have to go up bid. And that's one of the things that most of these firms took a look at when they submitted their proposals.
Sure. So what you're saying, Mr. Pennington, is that the statement that we only had projects over fifty thousand, what was it, once every, how many years or three years?
Three.
Three years is not correct?
But the, go ahead.
I was going to say, Joe may have handled part of the design of the road program on his own guy. Now, when you look at a project like that though, the cost of probably seven and a half million dollar road program, design, construction inspection, right now you're talking that somewhere in the neighborhood eighty-two hundred thousand dollars most likely for the cost of design, construction oversight. And looking at a project like that, that would have to go up bid. And those are the projects these firms had to look at, they would not be getting, you know, doing the little nickel and dime projects. If we do a lot of our projects on, yeah, they're going to get those. But the projects where we do a lot of our, our work, are projects that you're going to see that are going to come in, but we do have to go up bid on. And a lot of firms did not even want to approach us due to the inconvenience of having to go through a proposal process on projects such as that.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington.
That's why we want to be transparent for our taxpayers. I think that's important. I think we all agree, we all agreed with them and we weren't before. So, but I appreciate that this, this firm did that. Again, so.
Can you repeat those figures? You said, what was the road program?
The road program, well, I don't know what we're putting in budget this year, but I figured a half million dollar road program. I actually at Mentor had a, usually about one point six million dollar road program. But I did the design myself, so that saved city Mentor money. We still had the construction inspection and that sort of thing on those projects. And with a city such as ours, we would need to have that design, the construction inspection, that whole process would have to be done by, by a firm. And those costs would, would amount to, even a half million dollar project, somewhere there about eighty-two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, hold on a second. So that's a sixteen percent fee, which seems pretty high. Could you tell us what percentage?
That's, that's, sorry, I apologize. That was designing and.
And the construction for full-time.
Correct.
Okay. And sometimes we lump construction administration services separate from design engineering.
Correct. You break it up.
So with regard to design engineering services, what's the fee?
About half that, not, you know, eight.
Eight percent sounds about more logical. I mean, that's a little high, but that's more logical. Okay. And then you're assuming construction administration at full-time. That's pretty.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so Mayor, are you, can, can we table this and can you get back together with a firm to see if they can come back with a possible lower, lower from retainer fee?
I'm going to speak candidly. I think this is a terrible way to start a new relationship with a new firm. I think we should be voting up-down today on this proposal. I don't want to go back and nickel and dime them on this, especially because of the various changes that we have made to our ordinances, that there is a substantial amount of work that they may not get to do, as pointed out by Mr. Pennington, as pointed out by numerous members of the body here with respect to the fact that, that, you know, when, when fees are going to be fifty thousand or more, we're going to go up to bid and they may not be, they may not, they're not getting all the work. It's an apples and oranges comparison to compare what we have with GPD when we have this new way of going about bidding on engineering work. And, and, you know, I, I accept the fact that this is how council wanted to do that. But then council needs to accept that the engineer who is here, who, you know, needs to be here for the day-to-day and for the smaller projects, because they're not guaranteed the larger ones, it's just going to cost more. And everybody who bid costs more, but the difference here was that, was that Wallace Panter was head and shoulders better than the other two firms in, in, in all sorts of ways, including the fact that they are leaders in environmental and they have the landscape architecture portion. You know, their designs, oftentimes civil engineering is a, is a block that is built. And we often talk about civil engineering as, you know, when we see an ugly, hideous, brutalist building, we will often joke, oh, that was a civil engineer who built that. This is not that firm. This is a firm that's going to build beautiful things for us. And, and everything that they're doing here is worth it and they have my full confidence. And I think we're insulting them to do anything like go back and have them bid against themselves. We should have a up-down vote tonight so we can get this nominee to work tomorrow.
So I actually think they're going to, I actually think that we are going to approve them. I think that originally you did them a disservice by not negotiating with them. Because when I negotiate, when I get as your vendor, that is going to be a long-term partner with me, I negotiate upfront with them. That's how you do business. That's how you build partnerships and that's how you build relationships with people. You did them a disservice by coming to us and giving them, giving us this contract.
There were other things we took out.
We also didn't see. Excuse me, I'm blocking. We also didn't see the other two bidders, okay? So we did not receive all of the information to make an educated decision. So if you don't ask, the answer is always no. I think we will be able to work with them and I think we will, we will be able to get an answer. It could be that it comes back the same, but you know what? I bet you it won't be. So I am going to make a motion to table this. I hope that we can, we can come back with, with a great relationship with them at the next meeting. I hope that we can, you can have a meeting with them within the next two weeks. If there's a second, then we can have comments afterwards.
I'll second. I work for the taxpayer, the resident. I don't work for companies, so I don't want to get this number right. So I'll second table it.
Comments, Ms. Weiser?
Civil engineers do not build brutalist buildings. They don't design them. Those are architects. Civil engineers guarantee the roads we drive on, the sewers that sit under them, the water systems that sit under them are done and done correctly. And when they're done correctly with the right materials, our. And when they're done correctly, with the right materials, our residents' tax money goes further. I am so sorry, and I apologize to you personally, that you were brought into this meeting where this council was not really looking at, thinking about, thank you, Councilman Rock, the jump in the price. And I think that has led to what has happened. That's bad management. We can't help it. That is not how I would want this to work. We have to have a good engineer. I'm gonna vote to table it, but it is not because of what I saw. The one correction I had was the one I went over with Gabe. I think council needs to adjust this. I also think if something can work out, that would be great. And one last comment. Why does everybody assume that this firm bidding on jobs over fifty thousand won't get the damn job? If they are good enough, they can bid on it, and they can walk away with the work. If what you say to us, and if what we read, and if what I've heard says to me that your firm is that good, you know you can bid on these things and beat somebody else. Because if you're working in the city, if you understand, this is a city that goes bad. We're an inter-rank suburb. You know the junk we have under our streets. You know the issues that we have with them. You have an upper hand on anything you bid on if you are here on a daily basis. So I wish people would just stop saying, oh, they gotta go high because they're not gonna get the work. If your firm's that good, you'll get the work.
Again, comments? Time to move on to the table.
Mr. Key?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Booty?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
Mr. Ratt?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item F, override of Mayor's veto ordinance 2023-83, authorizing the transfer of funds from the General Thirty-three Fund One Hundred to the Community Improvement Corporation CIC Fund Eight Hundred, and declaring an emergency. Mayor Brennan.
My comments are in the back. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll be all right.
I'll make a motion to override the Mayor's veto. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any comments?
I have some concerns. And it's not about the work within the CIC. It's the, for the allocation of funds. And within the, we count itself currently, Mr. Kennedy, approximately seventy-two thousand dollars currently.
It's about seventy-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Thank you. So it's not about if the CIC should get funds. My concern is that we keep putting funds into the CIC. When I looked at the last four years, including 2023, the expenses were approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's over four years. I looked at the minutes from over the past year, and there's one potential project that, as I mentioned, you know, like Vice Mayor Weiss, I asked a brand project calling the pipeline that it be considered, that would require monies above seventy-three thousand dollars, the seventy-two thousand dollars change.
Here's me...
Yeah, that's...
So currently, there are no projects, however, there are no projects because the Mayor is refusing to, not just entertain, but fulfill any of the projects, entertain, right?
Okay, so what can we, can you provide, Mr. Kennedy?
Sure. So there's many examples, especially the last meeting that had been discussed. Number one is, we have asked that a D turned over to infill one house. He has refused to do that. That would be a significant project. There were projects such as a five-K run and a concert series, which has been, as you've probably seen since you've looked at the minutes before, which are smaller projects, which have been expended in the past. There were also a huge project on the west end of the city, which was a beautification project that has been planned and spoken about in the Council of the Hall, which then was discussed in the last meeting in December, which is a large project, flowers. It just, it's dead in the water without the administration on board because the city and the CIC are so intertwined that if the administration will not fulfill their ends, we cannot move forward. So there is ways to remediate that by hiring a director for the CIC, a very part-time director, which can, those funds can be utilized, and then it doesn't have to be intertwined with the city as much. But, and those are just like the tip of the iceberg kinds of things. So the Mayor is, at this point, not allowing the CIC to move forward.
Well, my concern is, when you say like flowers and benches, why can't that go through the city? Why does that need to go through the CIC? Why not through the service department?
So...
As an example?
That was so...
Why couldn't the council allocate money to the budget?
That was trying to do it.
Okay. And a five-K run, the one thing I remember about a five-K run was like four years ago, even though Weiss was in support of that. So I don't know, but, you know, I guess it's transitorial, but there seem to be projects that could be done, that the city could take care of through the funding. What's the... I just don't know why we have to keep allocating money into the CIC.
Before I go, I'll have Ms. Weiser.
The CIC, Community Improvement Corporations, it's a nonprofit. Because it's a nonprofit, it's able to go out for grants if the city can't get or do things.
Sure.
If it functions properly. In part because of the way council set up this particular CIC, the Mayor can act as a stumbling block. He also still ticked that the garbage survey went through CIC. It went through CIC because council approved that contract as a city and did it, the city council. It did it because in the charter, we have the power to do it. But when it went to his desk, he said, I'm not gonna sign it. So council then has two choices. You sit there and go, okay, nothing's gonna get done. Or you end up hiring an outside attorney to take him to court to force him to do it. So you end up in that loop when you have an administrator who just refuses to do what appropriately should be done. So council chose the other way, and they took it into CIC, which was appropriate. And CIC did it, and he's still mad about it. So that's one. Let me think. Chris, let me think. Number two, council at some point is gonna have to address the gridlock. And it's just not a matter of adding more people to the board, and somebody gets another appointment, and somebody gets another appointment. It's a matter of finally making the organization and accepting that that CIC can actually do something good for the city that can't be done internally. There are programs that are run through CICs all over the country and within the state of Ohio where they do excellent economic development work. That kind of stuff can happen. But it takes people, putting their personal things aside, and saying, this is an organization that we can use, that can really do dynamite, positive things in the city. And funding it and making sure the funds are there, and hopefully having CIC resolve some of their internal issues, either by working on their bylaws, making changes there, or we make changes at this level to make it more functional. That's great. If they know they have the funding, they can go and do it. But we really have to look at CIC, understand the power of that organization, and the positive results it can have for the city and its residents. It can't be about, I did this. It has to be about, we did it. And that's what's been missing. It's all about I, not about we.
I'm not, this isn't about questioning work of the CIC or the council work of the CIC. My, I'm trying to understand, are there enough potential projects that would exceed the seventy-three thousand dollars?
Yes.
When I read the minutes, they're not even in the notes. So, but, I mean, that's what, I'm trying to gather that information, okay? And that's the struggle I'm going through right now, okay? And I hear what you're saying, I'm not discounting what you're saying. I'm just saying, if the need is there, I would look, I would support, I would consider supporting those needs.
So...
So that's where my concern is with that. And it's not saying that things should or should not be done. Funds should or should not be provided. There's a, I agree, there's a potential positive effect from the CIC. But I guess I need to see, in order to allocate even more funds there, that we should have those projects presented.
So there have been many, many projects discussed, but right now, that gridlock has to go away, and it has to be the we as opposed to the I. All, there's, there's so much potential, so much potential. And all of the board members want to get things done. The Mayor has to be on board with that. Are there any other comments? Mayor?
You can override the veto, but you can't first the calendar. Twenty-twenty-three is dumb for transfers. So even if you override the veto, there is no transfer for twenty-twenty-three.
It never, it ain't posted in this year if the transaction's approved, and it would have to be included in the permanent budget.
It was included, wasn't it?
No. Not on charge.
So it just would have, so council would just have to put that in the budget, correct?
Correct.
It wasn't in the, Mr. Kennedy, it wasn't in the, because it was posted, because it was approved in the last council meeting?
I don't post the transactions till it's signed off by the Mayor, same as the contract, the two-month contract.
Okay, so council would have to put in the budget, is what you're saying? Okay, so there's a motion, a second. Are there any other comments? The motion is to override the veto. Yes. Ms. Weiser?
I have one other question. Mr. Kennedy, you said you do not post it until the Mayor signs off on it?
Correct. I have to send the second copy to the County Budget Commission.
Okay. So if we pass this again, are you signing it, Mayor, or not?
No, I'm not signing it. So just to clarify a point, there have been instances in the past where the Mayor has not signed an ordinance, but the ordinance has gone into effect. I think what Mr. Kennedy was referring to is, by operation on our charter, the Mayor has a right of veto, and then in connection with that, council has a right to override the veto at its next regularly scheduled meeting, which is what you have afforded today. So if you take a vote on the record to override the veto, whether the Mayor signs this agreement or not, will become law.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. But I think what I was asking is, as long as that's law, are you transferring the funds?
When the date that it becomes official, then I can make the transfer.
Okay. You don't have to have an additional sign-off from the Mayor to do that.
I will refer to the law directors when he would tell me that it would be officially to be recorded, and I would record it and send it to the county.
Thank you. I just want to make sure, if we do this, and it becomes law, and we appropriate it, that it will happen, and we will not see another, we did it, but all we did or got, he never approved it, so we can't have it. That's all I want to make sure. Thank you.
Until the governance is fixed on the CIC, all we're doing is transferring money into what is in essence a city council's slush fund. And I think we should stop with that, and we should fix the governance, and then we can start doing all the fine things that we say we want to do with the CIC. Thank you.
And we can remove the blockage of the person that refuses to allow anything to move forward, and probably would be doing stuff it could have done last year or the year before. It has taken time. It took energy. It took working through all of the bylaws. It took making sure there were protections for the residents, that when things would be done next to their homes, that they would at least get notification. Those kinds of things at least got cleaned up over the past two years. The vehicle is there. The blockage is the problem. And it's not the council members that are on it, or the resident member.
Mr. Thompson, another one?
Mr. Key?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Booty?
Aye.
Mrs. Weis?
Aye.
Mr. Ratt?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Thank you. Agenda item G, override of Mayor's veto ordinance 2023-86, amend the ordinance 2023-10 to increase the compensation of the Vice Mayor for the term beginning January first, 2024, and declaring an emergency. I'll make a motion to override the Mayor's veto ordinance 2023-86. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any comments? Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. McConville. I just have a question for Mr. McConville. I know we already have a best guidance from the state on this matter. This is complicated all further because the Vice Mayor is now in her term.
Well, that is a fact that we'll have to build into our fact pattern when we ask for an advisory opinion, how the, I think we'll be applying to ethics commission, how they will answer with that fact, I cannot say. But yes, it's conceivable that it would be an issue. The legislation has been written in a way that prevents the Finance Director from making any payment in addition to what is currently authorized to the Vice Mayor until a permissive opinion is rendered by the state. So the way that this legislation is almost originally adopted is written, you know, you're protecting against any risk of an ethics violation.
Thank you for your clarifications, Mr. McConville.
Mrs. Sacks, do you have a question?
I just have a follow-up question, Mr. McConville. Since this ordinance was passed in 2023 by the, I guess, previous council, would that hold that this was passed as... will that hold that this was passed, this is just a matter of when it comes off?
I don't, I can't predict that. I don't know how important a fact that is. It certainly will be incumbent on the city in presenting this, that we walk through the legislative history, which now includes adoption and a veto, and perhaps subsequent act by council. That will have to be disclosed for, you know, third-party evaluation.
Any other comments? And Mr. Booty?
I'm worried we're being as connone regardless of it. For the additional compensation for the vice mayor, for the additional responsibilities of that office. I don't want to have this question every two years, essentially. Or if the veto were to not be overridden or were, when could it be reversed? Because my, I'm worried about what's going to come out.
Yeah, we should, they should have, I'm wondering, here, by concern.
If we table it, then can we revisit this later, only if the ruling from the state, if the state comes back and say, knowing that you're in term, then unfortunately. And it's a fair amount of comments, and it's a twenty two term situation, you know?
Well, it is, and it's a quirky situation because the vice mayor is a position that comes up every two years, and it can be related to a person who is just beginning their term, or it's someone who's in term, in the middle of term. And so it's not going to be entirely clean, in my view, to grant a vice mayor raise. So, and that's part of the argument to the state is, you know, this ordinance was passed at a point in time that was prior to any nominations having been made and any vote having been taken by this council as to who the vice mayor would be. In terms of timing, we should have, you know, an answer back within, I would say, the first six months, if not sooner, of the year. If the answer is no, I mean, we really have to kind of go back to the drawing board and try to figure out what we can do to address compensation for the vice mayor. But I can't really be any more specific than that because it's a quirky set of facts.
So best case scenario, if the motion were to be, were to override the veto, and the state were to connect within six months, approximately, say, yes, because it was approved prior to the term beginning, it's no harm, no foul.
Well, there's not going to be, we're not going to be in a no harm, no foul situation, no matter what, because the way the ordinance is written, the finance director cannot pay additional amounts to the vice mayor until we have clarification that this is not an interim pay raise. If they view it as an interim pay raise, there will be no additional monies paid, and no, no monies will have been paid at that point in time by the terms of the ordinance. If, however, we get a permissive opinion that says this is not an interim pay raise, and you may pay this amount pursuant to the passage of the ordinance, those payments will then commence, and it would be retro to the beginning of the year. That's the way we were considering.
Mr. King, did you have a question? Ms. Weiser?
Just to clarify, we're not talking about a lot of money here, at six hundred dollars. I just, I needed to say that. And I think the law directors clearly indicated we're covered. Either way, the ethics commission rules, because in essence, we're saying to the other commission, it's up to you.
And just a question.
Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Yes.
Call the question.
Mrs. Thompson, fellow room?
Mr. Key? Call the question, Mr. Second. Mr. Rat, with a second.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Key?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Booty?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Okay, we removed agenda item H, agenda item I, with ordinance twenty twenty three dash seventy four, amending codified ordinance section four fifty two point ninety nine entitled penalty, and declaring an emergency. And second reading, I hope everybody received the updated second time correction. Were there any questions? We did, Mr. McConville?
I do have one additional comment that was brought up by the mayor and related to the dialogue that occurred at the last council meeting. As you may recall, Chief Rogers indicated to council his preference that this measure not be adopted on emergency. And so, and the reason for that was he wanted some additional time to make sure he had all the paperwork in order, and that both his officers on the one hand and the court on the other were fully prepared to receive, you know, each and every parking ticket that is issued. So if council is inclined to meet that request from Chief Rogers, we would need to make a couple of amendments to the ordinance. One would be to remove the emergency clause from the title. And then the other would be to change the language of section four, to remove all the language that's currently in section four, and to have a sentence that simply says, this ordinance shall go into effect at the earliest time allowed by law. So I guess for purposes of ease of the discussion and with the vice mayor's support baroness, I would ask, is there a motion to amend the title to remove the emergency clause?
Summoned. Second.
Mrs. Thompson, fellow room?
Mr. Key?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Booty? Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And then again, with the vice mayor's support baroness, I would ask if there's a motion to amend section four so that it reads in its entirety as follows. This ordinance shall go into effect at the earliest time allowed by law. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson, fellow room?
Mr. Reddick? Mr. Key?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Booty?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Mr. McConville, is there anything else?
No, I mean, at this point, I think you entertain a motion to adopt. And if you do adopt, the ordinance will go into effect thirty days after this day.
Mayor, were those the questions that you were questioning?
Yes, simply that she prefers to prefer that this not be passed on emergency, but it be passed in the conventional sense so that the ordinance will go into effect after thirty days.
Is there a motion to adopt for fifty two point ninety nine?
Summoned.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. Summoned.
For a second?
Second.
Any comments? Mrs. Thompson, fellow room?
Mr. Key?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Booty?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
The letter I was adopted as amended. I believe there is a motion to enter executive session for legal proceedings?
Yes, specifically pending litigation related to the Emmett Dorian case.
Can we make that motion and go to executive session after the committee meetings?
Yes, we typically entertain the motion at this point in the agenda, and then we actually go through the remainder of the agenda, and then we go to the executive session at the end.
So is there a motion to enter executive session?
Summoned. Second.
Mrs. Thompson, fellow room?
Mr. Key?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Booty?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rat?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Okay, we will talk about the reports of certain committees and taking action there and building a housing.
At the moment, no report. I'll be sending, having a noodle set up for our next meeting because although we normally need the second meeting before services had scheduled the meeting then. And I'm waiting to hear that for that hour, whether she can take it two hours or one hour.
It is.
It's one hour?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to, so I said, okay, services will need them, but I'll do it because we have some things on the book. We have to chase permit fees and a couple of other things.
Any outreach, Mr. King?
Do report.
Economic Val and Ms. Marshall?
I'll report.
Finances, there is no report right now. Recreation, Mr. Penning?
Again, for the Recreation Committee members and council and others, they'll look out for a new one for the next recreation meeting, hopefully in January.
Safety, Ms. Marshall?
Just that there will be a new coming out, but it won't be until the, before the February.
Service, any assistance?
Thank you. On Tuesday, June sixteenth, S C S Engineers will do a presentation remotely. And this member has said a thirty-minute presentation with time for thirty minutes of discussion. So please come prepared to hear what they have to say from this long-awaited assessment of our recycling and collection services. Thank you.
Many of the whole areas, we don't have a cell. Going to executive session. Mr. Wees, paper and telephone? Request not to take telephones into the executive session. Absolutely.